Our clock is about two minutes slow up there. We actually had to have it, a new battery put in there this morning. So I would like to call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Oh, thanks. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte, the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts, is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. And Supervisor Hemmingson, would you read our pledge, please? Thank you. With introduction of any new employees? Seeing none? Report any actions from closed session, County Council?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. At this time, I will request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda? Hearing none? We will receive other brief reports or announcements relative to County of Del Norte programs and projects, progress of two-by-two committees, and so on. Supervisor Finnegan, would you like to start this?
Sure. It'd be brief and normal. There's really only two meetings that I had of any significance other than local meeting with constituents, which is always significant. First, after the meeting, our last meeting, was invited to go down to Sacramento. We had a press conference with Governor Brown regarding the implementation of AB 109 under the new realignment scheme, and we did that prior to the October 1st deadline because of all the angst of city police and anybody that wasn't standing with the governor, basically, that there was going to be a whole new wave of criminals that were going to be put back on the street. Number one, they didn't understand that it was not that they were opening the doors to the prison and moving them back into your neighborhoods, rather it was going to be having more to do with the new sentencing. But more importantly than that, it was a promise by the governor that he would fully fund the implications of AB 109. So together with the Sheriff's Association, the Probations, CSAC, the County Association, and the governor, we had about an hour news conference that you may have seen on the television or reported through the Internet, to where he affirmed his commitment that there will be the money as long as he is in office, and that further affirmed that there needs to be constitutional amendments to that end, although the legislature's heretofore has not been able to get the votes to do that. So it was a nice, it was a nice group to reaffirm our commitment to one another. Absent were the cities and the schools, probably because they're suing over it. Also then had another executive board retreat with the California State Association of Counties, met with the Finance Corporation as well. They are the funding stream that allows CSAC to do what it does, unlike RCRC has the housing programs, CSAC has the Finance Corp. There are a lot of programs that I think our administration is aware of, some that maybe they aren't, so we'll be talking in the future about those, whether it's regarding purchasing, whether it's regarding the investment strategy of Cal Trust and some of the other investment strategies. But there's definitely a way for people to save money in the county level and help benefit the State Association. One of those is going to be the new coast-to-coast drug program, where drugs, prescriptions for county, for not just county employees, but everybody in the county, is going to be at a reduced rate, even more so than we were doing with the Naco program, the prescription drug card. But an added perk is that the county will also get some sort of reimbursement from the companies. So not only will the constituents get to get their drug prescriptions at a lower cost, it will also benefit with a stipend coming directly to the county. So really a win-win situation there. One of the major things we talked about at CSAC is where we're going in the future, what's important to us, and number one on the screen obviously is realignment, how we're going to deal with that, and the constitutional amendments. There has been talk of some sort of initiative being put on the ballot. The governor is trying to go to the legislature to do it, and the governor's talking about doing himself. The problem is there that if it's tied to a revenue stream, if it's tied to tax increases, it probably will not be successful. So we authorized through the Finance Corporation to go out and do some polling to see what would work, what wouldn't work, what people think, and well over two-thirds of the people that were polled are in favor of constitutional amendments. So we are going it alone at this point in time. By "we," I mean CSAC, the State Association, will be drafting the verbiage for the initiative. There's a very tight time crunch here, has to be done within the next couple of weeks. It'll then go for chapter and summary, and the AG will take a look at it, and then it will, will have to raise money to go ahead and do the signature gathering. But it is well orchestrated. There have been some consultants that have been hired that are, this is their job, telling you what to go after and what not to go after, what would be popular, what wouldn't. But the, from the county point of view, we don't have a choice. We do not have a choice except to seek a constitutional amendment that says that we're willing to do the job, and we're in, we're all in. We can do the job better, we can do it cheaper, and we can do it more in a sense that it is what the community wants and what the community needs, based on outcomes, based on best practices, but we have to have the money to be able to do it. And the only way to guarantee that is through a constitutional amendment. So that's what we're after, and everything else is just subtext. That's it.
Thank you. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, I've had, my primary time this past two weeks is that I was in Huntington Beach for the Coastal Commission meeting, and the LCP discussion is still alive and well, and in fact, the League of Cities met with Coastal Commission staff and was attempting to make sure that the discussion moves forward so that local governments can have a better handle on how to process applications for any kind of development permit. Also, as part of that, there are what are called ex parte communications, which relate to telecommunica, teleconferencing with different applicants for different projects. There were probably about four of them, and they last anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half at a time, trying to understand the details of each coastal application. So the learning curve is quite high, but I think I'm doing a fairly good job, I think I'm doing a good job in relationship to representing local government, which is pretty exciting. I participated in a senior center board meeting where, again, we're grappling with the problems that have come from a former employee. And I participated and went to the health fair, which was very exciting to see the new dental van, which is, it almost looks like the Wonder Bus, except for that it has two complete dental offices on each end of the van. And the plan is going to be that they're going to take it to a school site and not leave that school site until every child is served, which is very exciting, because historically, these kinds of vans come, and they're there for a couple of days, and then they travel to another school site. By the time they get back to the other school site where the referral happened, that child may be absent, or that child may have moved. So they, they, they lose children in the process. And this new plan is that they're going to stay at that school until it's all done, and then they're going to move to another school. And the ultimate goal is that we are going to be able to have every child in our county will be served by this dental van, which is an absolute wonderful thing that Gary's office and First Five, and it's a collaborative of, I don't even know how many people, including the healthcare center, and it's a wonderful addition to our services in our county. I attended the surf contest for a bit. I had a constituent that I met with Community Development on, on electricity issue, and I've been working on attempting to find people for our Regional Water Quality Control Board. There are four openings currently, and if we can get people from our community to be on that board, it will be one more step in being able to have our voice heard regionally and statewide. There's an at-large position open, there's an ag irrigation position open, and there's a water quality expert position open. So people, anyone's interested, they should go on the website of the Water Quality Control Board and see what those positions are and what it entails. The meetings are three days in a row held in Santa Rosa, but it's important issues because stormwater runoff and all water use is, is getting stricter and stricter, and so we need to make sure that we have people there that can bring a sensible voice to these boards and to these regulations. I think that's it. And I got to see my grandchildren because I was in Southern California, so it's pretty exciting.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah. I filled in for either Supervisor Sullivan or Supervisor Finnegan on tri agency a couple of times. I don't know which one. One of them had to recuse herself, and the other one was out of the area. Also had a local mental health board public hearing where we, I'm sure most, a lot of you are here because of the Mental Health Services Act Innovation Work Plan, which we'll be hearing a presentation on later. Got to go through that. I'll get to sit through it again, I guess, as well as Gary, we'll get to, and everybody else that's here. Had a meeting with a couple of city council members on, on items of common interest to the county and the city, mostly having to do with the consolidation of services, so that was pretty interesting. Hopefully we'll have a joint city-county meeting soon. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting, and attended Cookies for Cops, which is always a great function. I think all the county police personnel was there, except for, CHP was not there, but representation from the county, Supervisor McNamara and Sullivan and myself were there. The city council, Harbor, I mean, just about everybody you can think of throughout the, throughout the county agencies and entities were there. It's quite a function, quite a, quite a deal that they put on there, so it's always enjoyable to see that. And that was about it for me.
Okay. Supervisor Sullivan?
Attended a tri agency meeting. I've had several conversations with voters in the area regarding the Solid Waste Management Authority. Attended the, in place of Supervisor Finnegan, the Border Coast Airport Authority, which they had some really cool stuff. The, obviously, it's a repeat of the $200,000 grant for marketing, as well as the, the authority voted to add Smith Ranch Rio, which now, from what I understand, needs to go back to their council to approve that, and then we'd be adding another member to the Joint Powers Authority. Attended Cookies for Cops. Once again, really well attended. It's a cool event that Harrington House puts on to basically celebrate and thank the law enforcement community for the work that they do. Had some of the Sea Cruise cars. Once again, it was a really well-attended event. Congratulations to Crest City Car Club and the Del Norte, Crest City, Del Norte Chamber of Commerce. Wonderful event. The, let's see, and finally, attended the, the high school football game. For some reason, Del Norte always has a hard time with homecoming, or cursed on homecoming. And what was cool, though, my son was super excited he got to be a water boy for the varsity team, and there was probably four or five kids out there, and it, they really, they really got jazzed about that. He was, he was, he was the expert after that point, so that was cool. So, what's that? Oh, yeah, I don't think it went that far though.
I also attended the Cookies for Cops, which is in combination with the Chamber Mixer, and it was a huge attendance. It's a good thing to have a nice, big facility and great food. They always have soups and breads and salads besides the cookies. And I just feel that we're so fortunate to have that facility. Unfortunately, we need it, but fortunately, we have it. We have a place for people to go that, that have that need. I also had agenda review for this board meeting. We had a health and human, or negotiations on the Health and Human Services building with the Barnes family. And Sea Cruise, as always, great turnout. It brings so many people to this community and to our businesses, so I hope that never, never stops happening. Unfortunately, the, the surf contest had their last event this year, and I'm hoping that someone would be able to step up to the plate and try to take that over, because again, that brings so many people to this community, and it's a, it's a fun event. And this weekend, another fun thing I'm going to get to do is go to Corvallis for the BYU game with Oregon State and see Cody Hoffman play, our local boy. And that's it. I don't normally attend football games, but my son-in-law and daughter had tickets. We watched Cody on television, so. Okay, at this time, we will have public comment. Members of the public may address, pardon me? Oh, we're ahead of schedule. Sorry, John, you'll just have to wait. When it's a, oh yeah, and that clock is a little slow.
It's 18.
Pardon me? Let's go ahead and take the consent agenda at this time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to poll item 18, 19 for discussion.
Okay.
Got some questions on it.
Anything else that supervisors would like to poll? Okay. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda excluding 18 and 19?
Move to per.
I have a motion and second. Jeremy, would you poll the votes?
Supervisor Hemmingson? Supervisor McClure? Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes. Okay. Now we will take public comment. At this time, members of the public may address the board on manners, matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold those comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. John? Yes?
Good morning. John Alexander, District Attorney. Two weeks ago, the board authorized approval of a new deputy district attorney for my office. I just wanted to take the time to come down here and basically thank you all for that. Additionally, my thanks to Clint Shad and especially Jay Serena. You told us that if we maintained our renewed Pelican Bay prosecutions, which my deputy, Lisa Spekio, has been assiduous in prosecuting, that we would get that new deputy in this area, era of budget constraint, indeed crisis. Not an easy thing to deliver on. Mr. Serena, you did. We are tremendously grateful for your assistance in this. Thank you. Those reinforcements allow me today to announce that you have enabled me to take our war on narcotics in this community to the next level. Specifically, as most of you know, or you've heard, methamphetamine is responsible for 70% of the felonies that hit my desk in my office. Probably over that, Gary could address it. The CPS removals of children are meth-related, well over 70%. As of today, all possession of methamphetamine, as heroin in this county, will be deemed felony status and charged appropriately. No more misdemeanors whatsoever. Possession of any amount of usable methamphetamine, no matter how de minimis, if you are in a car, if you're on a skateboard, or anything in between, it will be deemed transportation, and you will be prosecuted with a felony status case, and you'll be looking at a three-year enhancement if you do that again. Parents or custodians with children, and especially infants, we have seen an alarming proliferation of children being born, and this makes my eyes bleed seeing children born contaminated by drugs. I mean marijuana as well, which is every bit as insidious to an infant. If you deliver a child that is contaminated, or if you have children in your house, as a custodian or parent, you can look to my office to begin prosecuting you for felonies for child endangerment. I spoke with Dave Mason earlier this morning, as well as a couple of weeks ago. If you are maintaining a crack house, basically Health and Safety Code 11366, where people routinely use or sell drugs, we will not only be coming for you for felonies on that, but code enforcement and I will be going over your residence with a fine-tooth comb, looking to red-tag it and shut it down and move you out. Last, I guess, I'd just like to say I was driving down Ninth Street today. Excuse me. Every morning I drive down Ninth Street, I take a right on H, and then I go to work between 7:00 and 7:30. I could easily take a right on A, then a left on Fifth, and avoid the five stop signs that I encounter by the way that I go. There's a reason I do that, and that is because every morning I get to see those kids going to Crescent Elk, and they are happy, and they are safe, and they are healthy, and it reminds me of what I in my office do. I just wanted to come here today and thank all of you, including Mr. Serena especially, for helping me do it a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on. We're too early for that item. For our presentations. So, from the consent agenda, item number 18, approve the proposed expenditure of the Cal Recycle Grant funds in the amount of $25,000 for fiscal year 1112 in an agreement for services with Recology Del Norte, and authorize the chairman of the board to sign as requested by the Director of Community Development.
Madam Chair, I have to recuse myself.
Okay. Supervisor Sullivan?
Yeah, I, the question I had is, it looks like this money's already been spent, and we haven't approved it.
Yes, this has, coming to you kind of after the fact, or at least part of it is, because of an abatement action on Parkway that kind of got out of hand. It was something that was overgrown with brush. It turned out that there was about four times the amount of trash that we had anticipated, and the project was done and, and got, got way above the amount that would normally have come to you. So this is unusual, it's coming to you now after the fact to try to, to accomplish this.
Kevin, can I ask you a specific question?
Yes.
I know 19 is directly impacted and deals with the Parkway Drive address.
Correct.
And because I own property within 500 feet of it, I'm going to have to recuse on that one. Are you telling me that 18 is directly tied to Parkway as well?
A portion of it is, yes.
And I'm going to have to recuse myself in discussion on that as well.
I, I guess my issue is, in this budget time, we, we can't afford to do something and then ask for money later on. The money's not, usually not there. I mean, in this case, we were fortunate enough to actually have funds become available, but that, hopefully, you know, we're not going to be doing this on a regular basis.
No, absolutely not. This was...
Because I think the project was good, but I don't, I don't think the protocol was followed.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Just to clarify, the funding for this is part of the state solid waste grant we got. And originally, when writing the grant, we hadn't anticipated going over 10,000 for recology services, and we went over that a little bit. So we could not use a purchase order, had to resort to the contract. That wasn't really, this came up midway through the project. This is one of the crack houses that have been working on it. Mr. Alexander addressed earlier. There was over 350 cubic yards of trash. The more we pulled out, the more there was. It just grew as we got into it, and because we're under a court order with a short timeframe, there wasn't really feasible to stop and go back and change the paperwork. We said, well, let's finish abating the nuisance, make it safe, and then we'll figure out the paperwork afterwards. And I've already had discussions with Mr. Hamlet, and this will not happen again.
Because that, I, I mean, if it's been a few years ago, it wouldn't have been an issue, but now, we're, money's tight. There is.
Yeah.
You know, I'd say we just lucked out. I'm hoping that, I mean, what does it take to go back and get the court order renewed or extended? I mean, is it, it's just a court appearance, I assume? Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's that. That's, that's a big part of it.
I, I just hope, if we get in the middle of a project and it looks like it's going to be bigger, that we, I mean, we could even do a special board meeting, just that, we need to be aware of that, because that's, that's a lot of money to, to pull from somewhere, you know? If it's, I mean, we lucked out, available, and...
I certainly understand that, and the important thing, regardless of what happened on this case, this absolutely will not happen again, and we will stop the process regardless of the short timeframe, in order to comply with the county's regulations with...
And I don't want to take away from the, the, it was a very good project, and congratulations on cleaning it up. I, I think that, you know, we've, we've had some really good ones. I'm just concerned that you get in with an open checkbook, and there is no money to take from anywhere, and I don't think that can be stressed hard enough, and if anything, if we have to stop and just, you know, cordon off the place and, and have a special board meeting or whatever to get the approval on that, because it is important that we're going to have the money in place to do it, so.
Thank you.
I move to approve items 18 and 19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jeremy?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes. Okay. See if we're close enough to... Well, we're not close enough.
19 yet, have you?
Yeah, that was both.
Yes.
Both at the same time?
Yes, we did. Item number 20, budget transfers, approve a budget transfer. 09-03 in the amount of $5,140,000 within the grants administration budget towards the funding.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We, we take, I think it was 19, but you don't have a, we need to take 19 up again.
I only needed to recuse myself on item number 18.
Okay.
And I think most of the discussion was, was, was taken up, but I, I find it hard to believe that we, we don't follow process enough to where you have to, to gain, you don't know if the person's got insurance, you know, the contract, all of this stuff is after the fact. It's very disappointing to find out that that's already done, and then after the fact, you have to go back and fill in the places, and I think everybody else has already spoken to that, so I just...
So do we need, Supervisor Sullivan, to amend her motion to be 18 only, and then we can take a separate one for 19?
So amended.
I'll amend my second.
So we need to poll the vote again?
Move to approve item 19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
And I, and I do want to say it was a great project. It needed to be done. Grateful that it got done. Just disappointed in the process that went through.
Okay, item number 20.
The budget transfer before you is for the acceptance of the revenue, and then ultimately expenditure of that revenue for the home project for the low-income housing that was described today in the first book. Is the summer park phase one. At this point, this would be accepting the money through the Department of Housing and Community Development, accounting for that money, and then processing that money as the...
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the board for discussion.
I have a question for Jay. How close does this bring us to our plans and our housing element, general plan?
That question was asked yesterday, and I don't know exactly how close we are. Heidi, do you have an idea?
I believe we still have four-hundred-and-eighty-nine.
So...
Unit to go.
Could you just give a little primer of how that, how we, the formula that we use?
The California State Department of Housing and Community Development, they have, you know, people who do demographics and do all that magic, and they come up with a regional housing needs allocation for each city and county in the state, and that is what they have given for DelNort County, a portion to the city and a portion of the county. And unfortunately, ours are heavily loaded on the low and very low. The next time we approach an update to our housing element, there is an opportunity for us to try to provide documentation as to why we think those numbers are high and work them down, and we're definitely gonna do that the next go-around. This, the current housing element runs through, I believe, June of two thousand and fourteen, so we would likely begin, you know, in the next couple of years.
Do we need to wait to do the, or is there, like Supervisor McClure's saying, you know, can't we apply for a waiver or an exception to that rule based on our land base? I mean, we only have twenty percent of land, how much is, are we gonna set aside that you...
We were able to demonstrate through our land inventory that we had adequate land to meet the housing needs at the various levels. If our numbers were to get any higher, we would definitely run into a problem. I'd like to see them lowered during the next go-around. I think we're okay for right now, so there's no need to reopen it.
Yeah, but we're so short after this, this, I mean...
Yeah. The good and the bad is the fact that we have had such a decline in building that our vacant inventory has not been used, therefore, we still have it, so we would have it in two thousand and fourteen also unless we see a real growth.
So we have, we have the inventory of properties to be able to meet this goal, even after Cal fire has come in and put their hammer down on some of these? Aren't some of these...
Based on our state-certified housing element, we do.
The problem is, we weren't able to co-mingle the city with the county's housing element, because...
Right.
The city, if you did, would be over, or at least we would meet it.
Yeah, it is definitely...
That's the legislative change that needs to happen.
Yeah, and we've, we've discussed this in the past. I agree.
And isn't this based, not just on population, but meeting income and everything?
Yeah.
And I think that's, one of the reasons our, ours is so high, is because of...
Yeah, it just, it really places an unincorporated county in a very difficult position when you don't necessarily have areas that are served by water and sewer, because you need those two services in order to get the densities you need to have in order to actually achieve affordable housing at the rates that the state is asking, so it's more of an urban thing than a...
So we need to have more projects like this one here that we're approving? And even though these properties come off the tax rolls?
We're eating ourselves up.
It, it makes no sense.
It's, if we don't meet our housing need allocation, you know, there is no penalty for not meeting it, because we historically never meet all of the housing for all income levels, so...
Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi.
I feel better now, thanks, Heidi.
Jeremy, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recognize Jim Carnegie worked on that particular development and did a lot of work with that developer, who have done an excellent job on Hidden Creek, so...
They did.
And Jim does a lot of work through the grant department. I recognize him.
Okay, we will go to our scheduled items now on the presentation of the Mental Health Services Act innovation work plan, transition age youth collaboration.
Right here, hiding over here. Thank you for providing us with some time to show you what you just approved in a little bit more detail. I know you were able to see this in your agenda packet, but I thought it would be great for you, as well as the public, to see what's going on here, what we plan on doing. This is clearly one of the most exciting things that we've been involved in a long time, and we know that the board has had transition age youth, especially those in foster care, as a high priority forever. So we think that this is a major step in the right direction to, to address the transition age youth children in foster care, but as well as other youth in our community, so...
He's just gonna share, Gary.
Oh, okay. Let's see, how do I, how do we move on this? Oh, she's got it. F-five. Got it, okay. So we'll go through this rather quickly, because we know your time is short. Okay, got it. So essentially, there's a funding source, it came through the Mental Health Services Act, as you know, that's one percent income tax, state income tax, on those individuals that make over a million dollars a year, and so that's produced quite a bit of funding for the mental health system, and a piece of that is innovative funding. So we have put this plan together to utilize our innovative funding over the next three years, and you can see, this is the experimental, risky kind of projects that they allow us to implement and see how successful they'll be. We'll learn a lot from this project, and hopefully, the project will be successful with everyone's help, and we'll be able to continue it after three years. But you can see some of the major issues around increased quality of services, including better outcomes, increased access to services, increased access to underserved groups. So we had a planning process that took place that you were involved in actually approving the funding for, and we contracted with the California Center for Rural Policy at Humboldt State University. We put together a leadership team, but instead of reinventing the wheel and creating a whole new plan once again, because we've been doing a lot of planning over these last few years, we thought we'd review all of the existing plans that would be relevant, those from at least the last five years, and see what those plans, what the community's already told us, rather than asking them the same questions over again. And what became apparent as we reviewed the plans is that transition age youth were the big concern, were the sort of the gap, the unmet need, as far as comprehensive approaches to that population. And in the mental health world, which is where the funding comes through, that's identified as youth sixteen to twenty-five. So we put a plan together, and Crystal Marketan, our program manager for the social services branch, who will be managing the project, will tell you about the plan.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna briefly talk about the plan here, F-five.
So you just have to get this now.
Okay, so the plan, the working name for the plan is Rural Connections for Leadership, Advocacy, and Support, and the TAE Collaborative will convene, empower, and support a local DelNort County Transition Age Youth Council, which we're calling TAE for now, it's kind of a placeholder name, which will probably be changed by the actual council themselves, that will in turn advise the Transition Age Youth Collaborative and launch a social networking site for TAE, which we will serve too. Connect TAE living in DelNort County with peers, peer mentors, and resources. Advocate for tailoring local services and resources to better meet the needs of TAE, including TAE involved with foster care system, and link TAE to training resources for leadership and advocacy skills, and educational and job training resources and internships. And for the purposes of this particular plan, the age group served will be sixteen to twenty-five years of age, and also at risk of experiencing mental illness. And I wanted to also mention that the TAE Collaborative has been meeting for approximately six months, probably a bit longer, and started with Health and Human Services staff, and now is being expanded for this program. So here's a, sorry, I'll go there. A graphic depiction of the dynamic interface between the collaborative, the council, and the work plan. So we're hoping that they will all just be a continual cycle. And here is a list of those people that have been invited to participate, and we have had attending our most recent meetings, and we've also added to this list with Rural Human Services and the Building Healthy Communities staff from that initiative also. So I think that we want to be inclusive in this, and we really want all services provided to this population to be an integral part of the development of the collaborative, and then ultimately, the plan and the services available to the population. So the TAE Council will be comprised of transition age youth in one or more of the following categories, so involved in public systems, homeless, pregnant or parenting, living with a disability or special need, or dropped out of high school or enrolled in a community day school. And again, a graphic depiction of the council, so sixteen to twenty-five, and then in one or more than one of the categories that I just mentioned. And then the social networking piece allows for the TAE Council to make peer and adult connections in the community, not just the council, but all of the youth that would be connected to the program, and youth to access available resources, youth to receive assistance with transportation, and other issues that are challenging due to living in outlined communities here in DelNort County. So, and we're really hoping that the social networking piece can really help with that, because not all kids outside of Crescent City are aware of a lot of the services that are available to them, and some of them living in Crescent City, so... And the TAE Council goals will be to become the voice for TAE in DelNort County, access services that are valuable, or assess services that are valuable for the TAE population, conduct social marketing of identified services from their perspective, and provide feedback and recommendations for improvement about available services to the TAE Collaborative. And this is an important piece, because the TAE Collaborative is comprised of the service providers for that population, and so they'll be getting direct feedback from those people that are actually the consumers of those services, and so we're hoping that that'll be really valuable in terms of those of us who provide those services. And Gary...
One of the advantages for us is that we're already providing some services, although we don't feel it's extensive enough for transition age youth. And so there isn't a lot of funding that's available for, through the Mental Health Services Act, but there's enough to do a few important things. But before I mention that, I just wanted to say that we're gonna be using our existing staff, some of the folks are sitting over there, to help mentor and support the new staff that will be hired, which will be transition age youth, and we'll also be able to provide a lot of the logistical support, and as much as humanly possible, create a sort of a multi-service center. We've seen some models for that in a new location, where we can bring some of the transition age youth resources under one roof. So that's part of what we hope to accomplish, and that's, that's the idea of the office space, which we'll show you that in a minute. Hiring the two transition age youth vocational assistants is really a critical part of this whole effort. There'll be county employees, they'll be working for DelNort County, they will have full benefits and all of the rights that employees have. They'll be empowered, just like the rest of the county employees are, to be part of the team that supports this population. They'll be specifically working very closely with the council. Also, funding will provide training and support. This is a new project, we've never done anything quite like this in this community. So we, but we have identified a number of experts in other communities who have done similar work, and we're gonna bring them up to do training, both for the council as well as the collaborative. We also have funding set aside for stipends for the transition age youth council members, so they'll be able to afford to come to meetings, an important part of what we think it takes to engage transition age youth. And the new office space, we don't have a lease yet, it hasn't come to you yet, but hopefully, in the very near future, we'll have a lease on that building, on the top there, it's the building on the left-hand side, at the bottom, you can see it more closely. It used to be the Tribal Taniff Office, it's a very nice office building, it has four large offices, it has two good-sized meeting rooms, and essentially, that will be their building. That will be their offices for the council and for the transition age youth services. As much as we can co-locate them in that facility, we will, but there's gotta be lots of room for the council and youth to, to do their work. So that's pretty much the presentation. We have outcomes that are required under the Mental Health Services Act. I want to mention that I realize that this has a lot of mental health emphasis. This is also a prevention program, so under the Mental Health Services Act, anyone at risk of any sort of mental illness is eligible, and what several youth have told me is that we're all at risk. And that's the way I see it, is that all youth are at risk, especially youth that are struggling to find their place in society as adults. And that's really what we're trying to do here, is create a workable bridge from adolescence to adulthood, and we're gonna stay with folks all the way through till twenty-five, that's a long, that's a considerable amount of time. And you're gonna hear in the future services that we're gonna be able to provide more extensive housing and support services through the new legislation that was recently passed for transition age youth in foster care, and so there'll be a lot that will connect to the youth in our community, and we think with their help, we'll do a better job. We're not gonna go down this road alone. We're only gonna go down this road with youth standing with us. They're gonna participate in all the trainings, they're gonna guide this, as Crystal said, they'll probably change the name of the council, that's all good, that's what we want. We want an empowered youth to help lead these projects. So essentially, that's, that's our story, and we're gonna be, hopefully, begin the process once we have the state approve the plan or accept the plan. No longer does the state actually have to approve it. Part of realignment gave you, the Board of Supervisors, the final say. In the past, once you approved plans, then we had to get the state approval. So this is a little different. Now, the local mental health board has approved it, with your approval, we can go forward. Thank you. Any questions for us?
Any questions for Mr. Platnik?
No questions, Gary, just a statement. I mean, this is just a follow-up to the continuum, something we've been talking about for over half a dozen years, I mean, even going back to the, trying to, the Little Hoover presentation we did, trying to turn the curve in out-of-home placements. It's nice, ten years, time flies. It is, it's nice to see something that you build on, and you build on, and you build on, and you finally get some focus, and we're there, it's fantastic, good work. And thanks to the youth.
I echo with Gary for the staff and the youth and the collaboration, that it's very promising, and any time we can take baby steps forward, they end up being giant steps for our community, so, chat out there.
Yeah, Gary, it would be good to get some update at some point in the future as to, you know, what you're running into, either successes or problems, that, because it is a needed area.
It's my guess that we won't be able to keep the youth out of your chambers, that they'll wanna tell you all about what they're up to, and hopefully, in the future, they'll be making the presentations. So yes, we will do that.
Well, that's fine, because if it was ten years ago, I mean, some of these, they weren't even in kindergarten, some of them, you know? And pretty soon, they're gonna be sitting up here doing our job.
Good idea.
Thank you. At this time, we will move on to another presentation, a presentation by Symphony Robinson for Building Youth Power, Mapping Community Health Summer Youth Internship. for Building Youth Power, Mapping Community Health Summer Youth Internship.
Hi, I'm Symphony Robinson. I am a First Five AmeriCorps Vista volunteer, and I'm actually, will not be the only one presenting. I have a group of youth here. First is Maria Rhea. Next is Alicia De León Mendoza. Next is Ben, Benjamin Thomas. Next is Michael Michelena. Then we have Chandler Vance and Kira Riley. And Marianne Candela will be doing the presentation for us.
Somebody at the end.
Oh, yeah, and there is Dylan Iamie, who is very important, and he's awesome.
Symphony, I'd just like to ask you a question since you're given fifteen minutes for a presentation. I just wanted to make sure that we're going to be able to fit all of them in.
Oh, yeah, we rehearsed this.
Oh, good. Thank you.
So I'm actually just going to do a brief introduction about what Building Youth Power Mapping Community Health was about this past summer, and then I'm going to let the young people take over from there. So before I go into details about the internship, I want to let everyone know that the community within Delnort and adjacent tribal lands came together a couple of years ago to construct a vision for youth that thrive here. And that vision is summed up in this photo here that represents the Delnort vision of our young people. So basically, this, this girl in this photo has had real experiences in her life and in her community that has allowed her the opportunity to make healthy steps towards a better future. That includes options for higher education, she has a valued voice in her community, and she has had real work experience, and she has also been given the tools necessary to make real change within her community. And this is really a quick synopsis of the vision of youth Delnort wants for all the young people that live here. The vision itself came out of the many community meetings and surveys through the Building Health Communities Initiative a couple of years ago. When we are thinking about the vision, we know that this is a very difficult task to accomplish. And when speaking of youth development, we also know that there are many components to tackle in order to create the change we want to see for our youth. So over eight months ago, local partners within the community came together to tackle a piece of the vision and provide work experience for youth within the region, which is how the idea of the internship began. One of the largest partners was Rural Human Services and people within the Building Health Communities Initiative, First Five AmeriCorps Vista volunteers, which would be myself and Marianne, also Michael Waddell and Chad Hagelmeier, the California Endowment, HealthyCity.org, and several other local partners, including the Department of Health and Human Services, CASA, Cracker, Friday Night Live, and a slew of other people. So when people, when we got together, we immediately discussed the many challenges the community faces. It was easy to point out statistics around issues such as poverty, drug abuse, teen pregnancy, when we initially started to map out a picture of what the community looks like. We all know to some degree the challenges our community faces, but we really want to start highlighting the resources. One of the easiest first steps in recognizing these resources or assets is to put them on a map. And imagine instead of seeing facts and figures about what is lacking within the community, you have a map of assets that already exist, such as school programs, food resources, or thriving local businesses. And then you learn about those resources in-depth so that you can expand, develop, or build upon them, allowing the community to solve its own problems. This is called asset-based mapping, and this is what twenty-five young people had the opportunity to do this past summer. Building Youth Power Mapping Community Health was developed partially to give young people three large opportunities. The first was to allow them to map communities within Delnort and the adjacent tribal lands. The second was to learn about different assets or resources that exist in these communities. And the third was to build leadership skills through various trainings during a six-week summer internship. So what is asset-based mapping? First off, we wanted to develop a loose definition of what an asset is, and for our purposes, it was just simply a resource that a community utilizes, therefore it can be categorized in many different ways. This type of mapping allows you to explore assets within the physical and social environment and with the purpose of creating an output, which in our case was a map. And it also is very important because it allows you to focus on what resources exist in your community so that you can build upon them. I just want to note that focusing on assets of communities does not mean that we're just ignoring all the needs and challenges that we spoke of. It just means that if these internal resources are utilized more fully and are recognized better, outsized resources will be used more effectively. That's just the simple of it. Why is asset-based mapping important for young people? Well, first, it allows you to visually see the needs within the community while also recognizing the resources the community thrives on. It gives youth the opportunity to learn how to work with what they have, which is one of the very important statements that we tried to instill, and find real ways to build upon and even develop solutions to make resources more effective. It also gives youth the opportunity to understand the statement, the community can come together to solve its own problems. And this is a very important statement because we know that people of Delnort and adjacent tribal lands can solve their own problems, and it is important to celebrate the resources the community already has and find ways to create solutions on a local level. So before we can throw out the vision and start talking about and asking young people to create change, we know that young people need to know what exists within the community before they can make real change to the community at large. And once they know what exists, it is easier for them to find purpose and value in the change they actually want to create. So we saw a vision of the youth the community has, we saw a vision of youth, sorry, the community has, based on the Building Health Communities Initiative that I spoke briefly of earlier. But we also know the importance of getting young people in to know about the regions around them. And that, this is why Building Youth Power was so unique, because it allowed young people to really utilize the name Delnort and adjacent tribal lands. They were actually able to focus on five regions, which were Smith River, Crescent City, Klamath, the Upper Yurok Reservation, and Hayouchigaski. And even during mapping, youth actually camped out in the Upper Yurok Reservation during the whole period to get the map completed. As I stated before, this was a six-week process, and the first three weeks were dedicated to training the youth in various areas that would help them create the maps and also build leadership skills. And some of those trainings include how to actually make a map using HealthyCity.org, leadership skills in communication, grassroots organizing, Building Health Communities Initiative, team and relationship building training, cultural competency and identity training, geographic understanding, and intensive media training for photos, video, and the use of equipment. So finally, the last three weeks were dedicated to creating an asset-based map. Each, there's about a group of five to six youth per region, and I will let the young people talk about what they have accomplished so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Symphony.
Okay, these maps are a brief representation of the community. They do not tell the entire story, but they allow us to start our own stories, what we saw in the short three weeks. All right, well, first, we start to tour the communities we were mapping from the five choices. This allowed us to see what resources each respective community utilized and how interested we as young people are in each asset.
And then we also, after getting the communities and everything, we had a, before we started mapping, we had to ask ourselves, okay, what does it take to have a healthy community? And after discussing, you know, and talking in our groups and talking as a whole group, we were able to come up with the eight categories that show up on your screen: recreational areas, educational areas, support services, food resources, health services, cultural and religious sites, Delnort and adjacent tribal lands, attractions and information, businesses, economic development, and nonprofit. So those were our eight categories. And as you can see, we divided them up, and each were color-coded, so when you went on the map, you could actually see the colors and be like, okay, well, this area had more businesses, or this area had more tourist information and stuff like that. So that, that's how we divided that up, and...
Each map showed two things. One was a brief youth representation of that area. It showed whatever we wanted to choose, we decided to map, and it also showed the data points that we chose. On each one, you'll be able to see a short description of, a brief description on the data point we mapped, like describing how it's an asset and how it could help. And there are also photos on each, oh my god, tongue tied. There are also photos of each asset point.
You're going to be on TV Sunday.
Hope not. Okay.
Just look up, just look up, Ben. You're doing great.
Yeah, there's a description on each asset that describes what it's about, how it helps the community, how it can be bettered, and in which ways that could, it could be accomplished through. And there are also photos which show you a basic photo of what it's like, what it looks like, and what condition each and every asset is.
When you click on the video on the data point, you will see a YouTube video created, edited, and uploaded by the youth that were in this internship. And what it really shows is an in-depth look in why that asset is important. Our initial maps were a success. As an entire group, we collected forty-six assets throughout Smith River, Crescent City, Klamath, Upper Yurok Reservation, and Hayouchigaski. The assets on these maps will serve as a starting point for the community projects in the future. Delnort and adjacent tribal lands has become a leading community on the HealthyCity.org. This will give our community the first look at new digital interfaces on the website for future use. This is baseline data and information for use to start looking at our communities in new ways. We've been meeting on a weekly basis. We want to collect the youth voice around some of the gaps we've noticed in the assets we mapped. We want to build youth power and capacity around specific issues to build up the community we live and thrive in.
We want to recruit more youth, which we have, to get involved in the conversation about building health communities, partners, partners in youth development, and building youth power. This is our first step, but a small one. We know we can make a huge effort if the community would help out.
We're proud of the learning opportunity, and we know the value of learning and staying involved, and we would like to learn more. After our meetings get more productive, we want to be trained better and learn more so that our voice is valued in different ways. We want to make change and understand how to evaluate change and collaborate with other people so we can make change in the future. Thank you for your time, and any questions?
Thank you.
Where's the map?
If I go to HealthyCities.org, I'll be able to access all of your mapping?
Yeah. It's available to everyone who has internet access.
Well, what you should do is look in the mirror and see the greatest asset, which is yourself.
By the way, you guys did a great job, even getting tongue-tied. It's a tough thing to get...
Wake it tongue-tied up.
Yeah. Never mind the fact you're actually going to be televised later in the week, so just keep that in mind.
Thursday and Sunday, I believe.
Yeah. So anyway, you guys did a wonderful job.
Good job.
Good job.
I just have a question. What is the age range?
Um, our age range was between fourteen to nineteen.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Very good.
We really enjoyed it. And stay involved. Don't let it end here. Okay, at this time, we are going to conduct a public hearing, and after review, concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation to adopt a resolution for the approval of JPA 1201 to amend section noise and safety of the Delnort County General Plan as requested by the Deputy Director of Building and Planning. I will open the public hearing at this time. No? Oh, I guess I better hear from staff before I open.
The only thing I'd like to add to the board report is that we would like to amend the recommendation to also direct staff to send a certified copy of the resolution and a cover sheet to the state OES Hazard Mitigation Branch, which would allow them to have the documentation needed in order to consider qualifying for additional reimbursement on disaster-related, or for disaster-related projects.
I just have the governor veto. Sorry. Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Perry?
Richard asked me to be here today. He's got a conflict in his schedule, basically to encourage your adoption of the, amending the seismic safety element. Unfortunately, this application of the subject law has been somewhat inconsistent, and it appears that the state is now choosing to interpret it rather strictly and broadly. So getting on this list is not only important presently, but it's going to be, I think, more important in the future as things go along. Some statements made, and as we all know, the governor's signature's on a letter, that doesn't necessarily mean that the governor wrote the letter, it doesn't necessarily mean that the governor did the research, but the bill that was to benefit the county and especially the harbor was placed in the negative stack, and the initial basis was because of this section of the code. There are conflicting codes in play here. This resolves some of that conflict, but for the harbor to pursue other funding, we're a little concerned that this code section might be used for other state funds because now it's being interpreted very broadly. So we'd encourage your adoption and amending the element. Thank you.
Thank you. You have questions, Ernie?
Can I ask you a question, Ernie?
Ernie.
Ernie. Can I ask you a question of, what's the harbor's plan now that the veto happened?
Tomorrow, we meet with a couple of lending institutions for interim financing.
Okay, thank you.
We have to go forward with the project, otherwise there is no harbor.
But you have a plan?
It's not a good plan, but it's a plan. Maybe it'll be a better plan after tomorrow's meeting.
Second?
No other comment?
The only comment I got is that this is why we read our agenda. Because when I saw noise element, I thought, oh, come on. So, yes, I'm glad it's the hazard mitigation.
But then I looked at the dates, you know, when this all started, and I thought, okay, it's not just because of our last...
Noise doesn't change, it's just our ability to hear.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions? I had one question on Exhibit B. Were we missing a page? I noticed it ended with an unfinished sentence. It's the last page.
Last page.
On two point...
Yeah, I'm, I'm missing it too.
Exhibit B was just the first page of that element of the general plan, just to show where the language would be inserted. I didn't include the entire element in your package. So, yes, you are reading it correctly.
Yeah, I just thought, okay.
Yeah, no, that, that was just to show the, the place mark for where it will go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will, any further public comment? I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. I have a motion and a second. Did I have a second also?
Yeah.
Would you pull the vote, please, Jerry?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes. Is, I don't see Mr. Galia.
It's not ten, there's not eleven-ten yet.
It's darn close.
Try and do yours first.
It is, just eleven-ten.
Can you... Legislative Budget, oh, I'm sorry.
I would just like to take a minute for an announcement that, on an email that came through from Jim Carnegie, that we've been notified that we have capable assistance grants approved for the Culinary Art Training Center for the ADA Act at the Grange and Smith River and the biomass analysis.
Right on.
That's exciting.
That's good stuff.
Being that Mr. Galia is not here yet, Jay, would you like to do our legislative and budget issues?
Sure. Emailed the board a couple of days ago, a list of the bills that the governor had acted upon. Obviously, one of the significant ones is the one that Mr. Perry just reported on in regards to a veto for the disaster relief. That is a small percentage of the overall, but that is significant when you're talking such a large amount of money. The county share is considerably smaller than that, along with the cities, and there's a lot of volunteer assistance that will offset that cost, so... So in this case, you know, obviously, it has the biggest impact on the harbor. There were a number of bills that went before the governor, and some of the highlights, the Josh Lacy bill was approved, or it was chaptered. And the PIA bill was chaptered, and the bill allowing for the oversized vehicles on Highway 101 for cattle was also chaptered. A number of the bills that went through were processed through Assemblyman Chesbrough's office. And, you know, Senator Lamalfa was also involved in a number of those also. At this point, we're still going through to see what ones might have a negative impact. Obviously, the positive impacts, we're fairly certain of which ones those are. So we're looking at which ones might have been passed that will have a negative effect over time. As far as budget implications, currently, the state is not meeting the revenue expected revenues that they had projected that would then trigger the trigger cuts as a kind of a lowlight, I guess you'd call it. General fund revenues were down at this point. Corporate tax came in below the normal and the expected. Personal income tax actually were above the expected. Sales tax at this point were also lower, all that resulting in less revenue than what is going to be projected by the state of California. So we can expect the trigger cuts in some form or fashion at mid-year, and I'm sure they're working on those at this point.
Thank you, Jay.
I'll leave it at that at this point because all of those bills are in email form to you. If any of the public would like to see those, they can come by the office, we'll get them copies. They're just small snippets, so it isn't a lot of verbiage.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Scalia is here.
Yeah. Pardon me? All of you guys are being...
Oh, well, we just went ahead and took up a couple of their items while we were waiting on you.
Frank Scalia, consulting wildlife biologist, been in the county here as a consultant for over twenty years now. And every once in a while, I get a wild harebrained scheme, and I'd like to present another Years ago, I did my master's degree on Roosevelt elk, over twenty years ago. And back then, we didn't have a lot of elk in this county or even in Humboldt County. As we all know, we've got them.
A lot, no.
And as we drive south to Humboldt County, you know, there's people lined up all around the roads now looking at the elk. And I did some research, and I did some thinking, and I thought, you know, we're really messing out here in Delnor County because we've got this big, beautiful animal that we're not taking advantage of, you know? We have real potential here. And I started thinking, well, we don't want the tourists lined up on the road. What have we got? And so I looked into it, and I came up with an idea. And it's beginning stages right now, but here's what I'm thinking. So I have a proposal for the County of Delnor to develop an elk viewing location on Rowdy Creek Road. I found a location there. See, this is...by the way, this is my very first PowerPoint presentation, so you get to prepare.
Left.
Huh? Left. Kind of what I did.
Your other left.
Oh, down at the end. Way too technological for me. I did some research and looked into what other states are doing. Elk have been reintroduced into states such as Pennsylvania and Kentucky. Huge draw there. They...those states have put millions of dollars into elk viewing areas because they realize the potential for rural counties for tourism, and it's really worked out for Yet in our county, even though we've got the elk, we didn't have to have them moved here, we've done nothing. We don't even have a pullout anywhere in our entire county where people can safely pull aside and view elk. The work's been done. The statistics have been done by others. There's reports have been prepared. It is a really good thing for a community, for a rural community, to have these kind of elk viewing areas. It really draws people. To give you an idea, this is a photo from Dean Creek, which is up near Reedsport in Oregon. They had one of those dairy farms where the elk were everywhere, and it was wet. And it was just not a great dairy farm, and the elk were tearing down the fences. The state and BLM finally said, let's buy this from these poor people and turn this into wildlife area. And this is an example of their...one of their viewing areas that they have for elk. As you can see from some of these stats, a two-year study that they did in Pennsylvania showed that elk tourism was averaging sixty-two thousand visitors per year in a small location. Pennsylvanians aren't even known for elk. They also showed that seventy-one percent of the people who were polled considered wildlife and elk viewing to be the primary reason for the trip. This is one of the things my research has found out, is that when you ask tourists why they're going to an area, what is it they want to see, wildlife comes up really, really high on their list. Dean Creek, I contacted those folks and talked to them. They're off Highway 38, and they're saying that they're getting five hundred thousand visitors a year. I'm thinking that's a huge number. I...to me, I'd be surprised, but that's what they're saying they're getting. So obviously, there's a great deal of potential. This is an example of a viewing platform that was built for an elk viewing facility back east. So as you can see, these states realize, you know, the great potential, and they're willing to put some money into it. I'm not saying we need to have something like this right away, but it just goes to show what other people are investing in these sorts of things. So what kind of benefits would we get out of an EVA, an elk viewing area? Obviously, to introduce travelers to the wildlife viewing potential of Delnor County. We could provide maps and a kiosk at this location to inform travelers as to other wildlife viewing areas within the county. For example, we could say, here's how you get to the harbor, and at the harbor, you'll see sea lions, elephant seals, seabirds. Here's how you get to the Smith River bottoms, where apparently the Alexanders have gone into elk ranching. I drove by there the other day, and they've got fifty-four head out behind the barn. I've never seen elk in that area of the Smith River bottoms, and I've been going out there for quite a long time. So the elk have decided to expand. A great idea of an EVA would be to have a safe viewing area off Highway 101. My envision is for us to have signs for people coming down from the south and also going north. Elk viewing area, you know, we can work with Caltrans, we have locations, we can put up our own sign. Three tenths of a mile. I mean, obviously, they're going to say, wow, three tenths of a mile, it's nothing, let's go check it out. We could have a sign even that says, you know, biggest RVs welcome, because the place I have in mind's got all the room in the world. And so we get them off the highway, we have a place, they can safely view elk, and then we've got a place where we've got them, we've got information, more information, we can get them. Obviously, our goal in Delnor County is to get them here and keep them here, and this is one of the ways I think we could do it. Provide recreational value to the traveling visitor to increase their potential for a longer stay. Provide a safe and location...whoops, that's a typo. For school-age learning opportunities, one of the things, of course, that they're doing at other elk viewing areas is they're bringing kids in, self-viewing, safe viewing area for kids, and you've got this panorama in front of them. Provide habitat for other wildlife species. When you have an area set aside for elk, elk tend to mow that grass down, they tend to keep the area open, and as we know, we have a very brushy county, but those open areas are beneficial for other wildlife species as well. Let's see if I can get it to work. There you go. So what am I looking at? Imagine elk...Rowdy Creek Road, three tenths of a mile up, you can see the mill, you can see Rowdy Creek, so this...and I'm turned around for you folks. But anyway, you see that big clear area up there? That's a three...a four-acre parking lot that's already there. It's already paved. It's just sitting there, ready to go. Two access points off of Rowdy Creek Road already over. And then, as you can see, to the east of that, there's that meadow. That meadow, just the open part of that meadow, is currently three acres. So if you went in there and you did some cleaning up and you removed some of the alders, thinned them out a little bit, if you took the Himalayan blackberry down, you could probably get that up to five, six acres minimum. And that's just the start. This is owned by Green Diamond, and I have talked to the land manager for Green Diamond, and they are willing to talk. No numbers. As you are probably more aware than I am, they would like to do some willing and dealing with Delnor County regarding zoning, and so bargaining chip is kind of the way it came across to me. Obviously, in order for the county or any other entity to utilize this, we would have to get that into some kind of a lease agreement so that we can start doing habitat manipulation and other types of manipulations. I think this would be a great site. You've got Rowdy Creek right here, it's got potential for other wildlife. I could even see in the future, if it works out, we could put like a walkway along the creek, you know, hey, you know, there's...in the fall, you got salmon and steelhead going up this creek.
How do we get the elk there?
The elk? The elk are already there.
Already there?
The elk are everywhere.
Well, I know they are. I just didn't know they gather...
The elk already utilize this location, and if you do a minor amount of manipulation to that meadow, they will utilize it because they love that shore grass. You go in there and brush that out, just get that shore grass erupting, they'll be there. That's...every time I say something about wildlife, they do the exact opposite of what I say. So you never know. You never know. But they should utilize it at least to a degree. Okay, perfect location, ready to go. Three tenths of a mile off Highway 101, can't beat it. Elk already in the area. Minor improvements make it even more preferable for them. Four-acre paved parking lot with two access points and room for the largest RV to turn around. It's huge, can't beat it. Very close to the Oregon border. They're by making this the first potential tourist site that people run into when they enter California. And we put a kiosk there, we can direct them to other places we want to go. Not located on a major road, not going to increase traffic, not going to cause any problems. Proximity for Rowdy Creek, like I said, provides opportunities for future creek walking trail, salmon, steelhead spawning viewing area, who knows? All kinds of potential. You could take some of the bigger trees, you could top them, you could put an osprey platform up there, maybe we get osprey nesting up there, eagles nesting up there, who knows? But it's a great location to try these sorts of things if it works, if the elk come, if the tourists come. Here's my vision. Obviously, copied from somebody else, but this is the potential. This is the kind of diorama that I'd like to present to the public someday. This is what I'd like to say to them and say, hey, this is what we have in Delnor County. We link something like this to a webpage, you know? What do you got in Delnor County? Why would you want to go there? Wow, look what we got. Rival Yellowstone, this kind of thing. Wildlife cams, every other elk viewing area all over Dean Creek, they put these cameras up. And you can feed off them off the internet, and they feed them into classrooms. And, you know, people can say, are the elk there? Yeah, they're elk. Hey, let's run down there and go see the elk. They're in the field. Besides the fact it kind of acts a little bit for security. Other critters benefit, obviously, the open area. You know, there might be other things that people are going to see there as well. Are you going to see a coyote? Definitely going to see a bear once in a while. Other species that would utilize something like this as well. So where are we at? What are the first steps? We need to enter into some kind of lease negotiation with Green Diamond Resource Company to determine what it is that they want to get, us being able to utilize this property. They have stated that they do not see a lot of potential of that property for themselves. We would have to estimate the cost of brushing and mowing the pasture area, get it opened up. Obviously, there are places to apply for funding. Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation has provided grant monies to develop elk viewing areas. So this is potential there. California State Wildlife Conservation Board, I thought about the RAC, but I guess the RAC doesn't have very much money right now. This is where I fall short as far as my abilities to know where to go and kind of need help. Next thing I would suggest, if this goes forward, obviously, you could put elk sign locations along Highway 101 in order to direct people in here. I'm sure Caltrans has some kind of a elk viewing, wildlife viewing area sign that we could put up, not a problem. And then prepare the property and begin monitoring the elk and visitor numbers. Monitoring from the standpoint of just, you know, every once in a while, going in there and seeing what's going on and seeing if we're successful or not. Is this something we want to pursue? Is it, you know, is it building on itself? Great, let's invest a little bit more and get a little bit more out of it. An example of a kiosk, you know, I'm envisioning something a little bit larger than the one that's out in front of the cultural center, but just to give you, you know, give us an idea of what kind of potential. There's already actually an island in the park, you know, a little vegetated island. I'm thinking, oh, this is perfect, it's got a pile of elk poop already there. And anyway, you know, clear this out a little bit, let the trees grow, put a nice big kiosk there. Advertising, I don't know. Can we get some money out of it by saying, hey, restaurant, you want to advertise here? You know, we got a spot. I don't know. All kinds of potential there. Use the elk viewing area to point to other sites. I think this is a great place to tell people, hey, here's where else you go, as I mentioned before. And I also think that...oops, sorry. Here we go. I really think we need to develop something like this because we can challenge other entities. Redwood National Park, state parks, say, look what we did. We're a little old Delnor County, and look what we've done. What are you guys going to do? You know, why don't you guys develop an elk viewing area, wildlife viewing area on Andrews Beach Road or up in Mill Creek, and then we can tie this all in? You know, and all of a sudden, you're tying people and you're directing them all to places in your county, and the next thing you know, hey, it's six o'clock, let's go get something to eat, let's spend the night here. And that's my goal. My goal is to utilize these animals, beautiful animals, utilize them as a draw, utilize them to keep them here. And in summary, I think we're missing out. I think, you know, we have huge potential for these animals. People may come to us and say, well, you know, you're providing more habitat for elk, and you're going to end up with getting more elk, and we don't want more elk because, you know, we're impacting the agricultural areas. And my response to that would be, you know, this habitat's already there, it's already being utilized. The minor improvements that we're going to make are viewing much more than they are use. Not only that, when elk utilize an area and they're not disturbed, they tend to stay long. You know, if you've got a bale field and you're out there, you know, running around after them with firecracker shooters and noise and all that, they don't tend to want to come back. If they find a place like this that you've developed for them and they can utilize it and nobody's hassling them, they tend to stay long. And so maybe we're actually going to take a little bit of pressure off those bale fields for a while. I don't know. Potentially, they're there. The elk numbers that are obviously greatly increasing in this county obviously need to be thinned as well. And not thinning won't occur here, obviously, but it's close enough where these animals that would utilize this will also be hunted. So the numbers aren't just going to go boom, 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 we're going to end up with five hundred elk. These are hand-hunted herds, they are a part of the population that is hunted, and hopefully fishing games can be able to keep them. So that's my idea.
Do you have any questions?
You know, there are several groups, whether or not you want to call everybody a herd, but there are several groups. Counted fifty-four on Blake's property on the Smith River bottoms the other day. That herd that hangs out at the bottom of the hill, Crescent City Hill near Annemette's, it almost ran into one last night. Came home late last night, there was two cows on Humboldt Road blocking the road. Those are the biggest cow elk I ever seen. I've been looking at them, and they were huge. And that was a group of probably about forty, fifty animals. I don't know.
Two, two-fifty.
Pardon?
Two, two-fifty.
Ever dealt in this county?
Oh, there's way...
Wow.
Oh, yeah, easy. They're everywhere.
They're everywhere. I wouldn't say in this county you would probably be able to...
Frank, are you planning to go to the Farm Bureau on the presentation at all to get some feedback from them on it?
I can go anywhere.
Because I think it would be important to get their input in the process because it's going to be near them, especially out in the bale areas. But I think it's a great, great idea otherwise, so...
To relieve the pressure from the farmer.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. If you can get those crazy people off the highway that have got their cameras out there chasing elk around, they're nuts. They'll stop anywhere, they'll walk right up...
I did buffalo the first time I saw buffalo.
Walk right up to them.
Wish you'd actually have a place to start doing some kind of headcount.
My concern would be with the maintenance, you know, having to do with trash, restrooms, those types of things, the ongoing...you know, the initial startup probably is not that big of a deal. You could probably get a group of volunteers to go out there and get that thing ready to go in a short period of time.
We'll just add it to Ed's list.
But the...I think the continual maintenance of it would be the big thing. Restaurants are the worst, you know, I mean, they're absolutely the worst to maintain and keep, but I think it's a good idea. Were you thinking of it as being a revenue generator in some way or just an area that would be like a free county park viewing area type thing?[1768.41]
You know, I didn't envision it as a revenue generator. I threw ideas around in my head of maybe putting a donation tank of a box of some sort saying, you know, this is a self-supporting thing, please donate, people can put some money in a box, we can check it in, something like that. Of course, everyone's going to try to shoot it open and get the money. But no, I saw it more as an investment of the community in order to keep people here. And I think, I think there will definitely be returns off it.
Well, when you mentioned the kiosks, kiosks, and then maybe something out there also that maybe would generate some income to help with ongoing maintenance, advertising, the restaurants, hotels, if people wanted to.
I know kiosks are susceptible to banishment. I think that if you did something like that, you'd have to have one of those wildlife cams way up there in trees somewhere in a silence and smile here on Candid Elk Cam, you know, so that people who want damage will think twice when their face is on a continuous streaming camera. But, you know, that kind of protection is there.
Yeah, they'll shoot the cam.
Yeah, I know, that's another thing. There's actually a paper in wildlife, you know, how to protect your cameras under.
I think it's a great idea, though.
I do, too.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, but understand that.
Next steps.
You've done your work now.
And I'm more than willing to help. It's just that as a private citizen, I'm limited on how much time and effort I can contribute and do. I do make regular trips down to the Sacramento area, and one of the things I like to do with your, you know, I kind of didn't want to go past this point without at least coming to the county and saying, is this something that you'd like to do, is this something you pursue? Then I can go say to the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, and I can go talk to them a little bit further up and say, County of Delmore, the board of supervisors, you support this idea, can you help us? I wanted to talk to you first so I could have that, be able to go to them and say.
See, I would think that maybe we would come up with the, Mike, you're the supervisor in that district, to come up with the supervisor in that district and probably the resource conservation district and actually sit down with Green Diamond and kind of sketch, sketch the nuances of the plan before we go to Rocky, to the Elk Foundation or to the Wildlife Conservation Board. Because I think we could probably put together a plan. Now, I don't know if we need to try to figure a way to access dollars to do a feasibility or not. That would maybe be first step is finding out if there's any way. And that sometimes through the Wildlife Conservation Board, they do have small amounts of money that are designed for this kind of project that say, okay, let's get this money and then give it to the community and see what the community plan is and what it would take to bring it together. And that would probably be our job to contact them to see if that kind of dollar is available. But not get out too far ahead of it, so it's actually planned because I think if we can make the argument that it's an enhancement and it's a relief for the farmers, because it's true that once the critters are given a place to go, they all hang out there. Even, they're given a place to go, and then during hunting season, they seem to hang out.
Like the water cooler.
In that same place, too. They know where it's safe, so to speak. So, I guess, Jay, is that, would that fall to our court, do you think?
I think that in concert with Frank's idea of at least looking at what might be out there for funding, if there are planning dollars, feasibility dollars, then we can start looking at a few of the agencies. They're not limited, but they, there are some that I would look at in particular. Parks and Recreation is one of those that we'd look at. They sometimes have money for different types of interpretive and planning projects. WCB, obviously, because they're the funding arm of fishing game. You know, if the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation is interested in it, just kind of understanding what they might want to provide for actual funding or could provide would be nice to know upfront if, in fact, Green Diamond has some sort of a number. But I do agree, we have to sit down with Green Diamond, find out if it's feasible financially for them or if there are restrictions, if they want it purchased, if we want to use, you know, some preliminary steps.
I'm sure they'd love it purchased, but I also wouldn't be willing to go somewhere with it.
So, who's going to pick up this ball? How do we do this to make sure it doesn't fall to the wayside?
Well, I think that we can work with Frank and we'll, you know, through our department, through my department, we'll take a look at some of these funding sources.
And see what they have.
I'll start that up and I'll ask for some assistance.
I agree. I mean, I was on the plane on Sunday, and there were three sets of tourists. Two of them were from Germany and one from somewhere in California. They were coming to Crescent City to go to the redwoods and see the animals. I mean, that was their whole reason for being on that airplane, so.
Sounds like the visitor bureau ought to be incorporated in your discussions, too. I mean, the first thing, you got an idea, you nurture the idea, you identify partners, you identify the plan, you look for money. I mean, there's steps. I don't think we're going to, it shouldn't be squashed and it shouldn't just be rubber stamped. I think you're on the right track. Go find the partners.
And Martha, you brought up the RCD? Yeah, okay. And I wanted to go and talk to them about this, the whole thing as far as the money. Make sure that they're on board on the line. And then, you know, that is a possible entity for grant monies, too, to go to channel it through them.
Right, where they could be the actual recipient from the Wildlife Conservation Board or the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation.
All right. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Thanks for having an idea and following through during the research. All right.
Hard to get a bug, and you just can't let it go.
Yeah. Jay, capital projects?
Quickly, the townsite boat launch should be pouring this week. Neil and I went down, took a look at it late last week, and all of the panels, the precast panels are in the river. Most of the river work is now done. They're adjacent to the river, depending on what that level is at any given time. Apparently, the tidal influence has affected them at times. It was interesting to talk, I talked to Scott Bowman, who works for SHN, who's working for the county doing the biological monitoring. And the curtain has been one of the biggest issues, the silk curtain. And there's turbidity testing, you know, using the background before and after. And there's only been one incident where they actually shut down to allow for the dissipation of some of the sediment. And that was when they were digging the tow trench out of the main channel. After that, they haven't had a shutdown. It looks like the cormorants are very happy because, you know, Scott said that as soon as they did the tow trench, suckers moved in behind that net. And so, when we were down there, there was a tremendous number of cormorants eating suckers. So, it was, you know, we created habitat, I guess. The cormorants were all on, sitting in a silt fence, that's where they were perched. But it's going along, it's going well, and they, once they pour the upper part of the ramp, we're going to ask for an extension because it's just the upper work, the paving is probably not going to fit with our weather right now. We have to have a certain period of time to get the paving down. But they'll get a considerable amount of the work done. And the RSP that goes adjacent to the bank is pretty much all placed. They were going to do the articulated matting, which is where they plant the trees that were required to plant. They were doing that before they poured, so they'll be working on that. Battery Point, the RFP is out, it's been out now for about a week. It's a, it's a large project, so we're going to have to do the thirty-day period. But we expect to get bites. We've already had a bid board from the east coast call us on this one. Where the bid boards are, is they advertise the project, so we'll get wide advertisement. I think we have one contractor out there that actually does the design that needs to be done for this roof, but we could get some other bites, too, besides them, maybe subs for them. We're still working a little bit with the tsunami crews. As we find some projects, they still have some numbers right now, they're going to dwindle in November. They've been helping out on occasion in different places, very limited now.
That's it?
I just want to say, I was at Florence Keller for the senior center's picnic, and the place was absolutely just shiny. It was, everything is wonderful out there.
Parks, I can't remember when they've looked as good as they do now. And of course, there's a lot of new facilities. I did get a report from Ed that somebody backed into our concrete fence. So, we had some damage to our fence, we'll have to get that fixed.
Jay, is it possible, one of these things, to get a brief presentation on just the upgrades at Ruby and at Florence Keller, just a quick PowerPoint slideshow?
Yeah, some pictures would be good. You know, the city did that a while ago when they did all their stuff down there on Front Street. Eric, I mean.
Eric's very good at those PowerPoints. Yeah, we can, we're going to develop the pictures. We've had some taken already, and now that we're all done, we should be able to get those together. We'll go and take a few more.
Sylvia probably can put that together.
Ah, we'll find somebody. Everybody loves doing PowerPoints.
Oh, do they?
Except me.
The sewer project out North Crest, is that functional yet or there?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah, they just got all the groundwork done, there's no pumping system.
They actually, they buttoned it up, but I don't know if they have all of the, any of the connections done. I noticed there was still some painting down at the end at Crashers. I'm not sure where they're at on that one.
I don't think it's called Crashers anymore either.
What's that?
I don't think it's called Crashers.
No, it's not.
But we know where it is.
Show my age, I guess.
It'll always be Crashers in people's minds.
Yes, either, well, we'll try for the next meeting for a PowerPoint with some pictures in regards to all of the parks, some of the improvements.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.